Good evening. Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Please turn off all cell phones during the meeting. We'll begin with the call to order and the pledge of allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Okay, we'll begin with the proclamation. Steve Grant, Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. Whereas recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this county, including the city of Leavenworth, Kansas, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Leavenworth recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I Nancy Bowder, Mayor of the city of Leavenworth, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2017 as Leavenworth Parks and Recreation Month. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thanks. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioner. Good evening. Thank you for this proclamation. It is July, it is Parks and Recreation Month, and it is July hot. I'd like to thank all of the citizens of Leavenworth for visiting our parks and facilities and invite everybody to continue to do so. A few tips on keeping cool here as we go into these next few months. Obviously, the Wolman Aquatic Center is open daily, full operations from 1:00 to 7:30. And then don't forget about our little gym on the east end of town, the Riverfront Community Center. It's always, always cool, and we are also open daily. Just a brief schedule. We have adult basketball Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And we also have open gym for all ages from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Also, 1:00 to 4:30 Saturday and 1:00 to 4:30 on Sundays. That's open gym. Also during the week, for those who have little ones, we have an awesome program called Toddler Time, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10:00 a.m. to noon, where if you have little ones five years younger, you can bring them into the gymnasium. We have a bunch of toys and big wheels and little play cards for them to ride on, and we also put up a bounce house. So that's great for the little ones, especially when it's this hot, to bring them into the air conditioning down there. Again, that program is Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And thanks again for this proclamation and continue to enjoy our wonderful parks and facilities.
Thank you for all the work you do, Steve.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting of June 27?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes from the June 27, 2017 meeting as presented.
It's been moved in second. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Next item, second consideration ordinance, ordinances. Second consideration ordinance 8044 to amend ordinance 8035.
Madam Mayor, Commissioner, nothing has changed from this from the first reading. As a reminder, this is just clarifying the legal descriptions involved in moving some downtown properties from the TIF into the NRA.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
No.
If not, this is a roll call vote. Please begin voting, Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Okay. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance 8045, special use permit daycare center, 3812, light minute.
Once again, a second consideration ordinance with no changes from the first reading. If there's any questions from the commission.
Are there any questions?
No.
If not, do I have them? This is a roll call vote again. Please begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
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 Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance 8046, rezoning 4811, New Lawrence Road.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is the rezone for the 101-unit subdivision at New Lawrence and approximately 20th Street. There have been no changes since the first consideration reading.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
No.
If not, this is also a roll call vote. Please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Okay. Next item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance 8047, rezoning 926th Avenue.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this is the rezoning of what's commonly referred to as the Medical Arts Building. It has not changed since the first consideration reading.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission? If not, please begin roll call vote with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 Okay. Next item on the agenda, consider emergency ordinance to amend standard traffic ordinance seatbelt fines.
Our police chief, Pat Kitchens, will handle this slide.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, before you tonight is the state of Kansas passed a law that was effective July the 1st that increased the fines for seatbelts from $10 to $30. The current standard traffic books that we adopt annually and did last August do not reflect that change, and so in order for the city of Leavenworth to enact those changes, an ordinance must be passed locally. You have an opportunity to declare an emergency since we do not match the ordinance and do both this first and second readings tonight, if you so choose to do that. If you do not, we would come back in two weeks for the second reading. The consequence of that would be fairly minor, but if someone got a seatbelt ticket in the course of the next couple of weeks, it would still retain the $10 fine and not the $30 fine. So that's the question before you tonight. Would you like to declare an emergency and pass this ordinance in both readings tonight or do the standard process and wait until next week, or two weeks?
Any thoughts from the commission on this?
Chief, state law now is $30.
Yes, sir.
And if we're not in compliance with state law, what happens?
Well, for the purposes of a seatbelt, it's still a violation. It simply would just be the fine difference. And so that's the question is really, do you find that to be an emergency or can we wait a couple of weeks? Probably by a slight variation, I would think we probably need to do it tonight, both of them, if you don't have a particular objection to that, just so that we can get in compliance with the state statute. We had a little delay in waiting for the league to put the sample ordinance together. Otherwise, we might have been able to get ahead of that a little bit, but I think tonight's probably a sufficient-
Your recommendation is-
Sufficient grounds to declare an emergency and pass the ordinance in two readings tonight.
And I would be more comfortable with being in compliance with the state legislative statute. To clear up confusion, I don't think we're going to be writing a boatload of seatbelt violations in about two weeks' time. I just have a gut feeling about that.
Okay. You want to make a motion or someone wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll be happy to. Let's see. I move to approve that we-
First, we have to declare-
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I move to that we declare an emergency to amend ordinance for the standard traffic ordinance.
I'll second.
Is that correct? Is that okay? Or do we need to say-
I think a more appropriate motion would be to declare an emergency and consider the ordinance on first introduction.
Sure, I like your wording better than mine, right?
What did you say again? Consider on the first introduction?
Uh huh. Okay. Consider a first introduction of the ordinance to amend standard traffic ordinance for seatbelt fines. Will that work?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Was there a second?
I will. Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second, and please begin voting with Commissioner Rainey.
Aye.
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 The next thing we have to do is, in order to pass the ordinance from the first consideration, we have to do a roll call vote.
Yeah, you'll do the roll call, correct.
Okay. Begin voting with Commissioner Weekly.
Aye.
Roll call, sorry.
Roll call vote, aye.
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 Thank you. Is that all we need to do on that?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next item on the agenda is new business, and the first item is citizen participation, and these are items that are not on the agenda for this evening. Is there any citizens that would like to speak on any items not on the agenda this evening? If not, we move on to general items.
Wait, wait, you've got one gentleman.
You want to speak to something that is not on the agenda this evening.
It's on the agenda, but I would like to speak. Take 30 seconds or less.
When the agenda item comes up.
I'm sorry. Which, did it already come up?
It's number seven.
It's already come up?
Yes.
Oh, it's here now. Okay. The seatbelt fines?
Seatbelt fine.
Sure, sure. Go ahead.
Excuse me. I'm Zen Daniels. You all know me. Hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. Seatbelts. I am a certified fatality traffic accident investigator from Northeastern University and have multiple, multiple, multiple fatality traffic accident investigations in my history. And unfortunately, the vast majority of fatalities that I've investigated resulted either from speed or failure to wear a seatbelt. And for years, as a police officer, I wanted people, I wanted there to be a law that made it mandatory for people to wear their seatbelt. And now that we have one, or I guess you guys are getting us to one.
We just got you one.
Say again?
We just did.
Yeah, we've had one. We just increased the fine.
We just increased the fine. We already had one.
Okay. Increasing the fine is good. And you're going for 30?
Yes.
You should go for 100.
Dr. DePica.
Very well. I just wanted to say, I support that.
Thank you.
Brilliant. It will save lives, and trust me, I know it does. I know it will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Appreciate it. Okay. Any other citizens care to speak this evening? Okay. Next item on the agenda is general items, the presentation of the 2018 budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Over the course of the last four or five months, city staff has been working on the operating fiscal year 2018 budget. A large part of that budget process was the city commission goal setting, which we use as sort of a landmark document to informulation of the budget. So tonight, I'm going to just briefly go through the highlights of the budget. As everybody knows, over the next two days, we have budget hearings from 1:00 to 5:00 in this room, Wednesday and Thursday, open to the public. I encourage everybody to attend. The operating budget draft is online for everybody to see if they so choose. So developing the budget this year, I want to highlight what went into the thought process of the city management team and then what was communicated down to staff as sort of the guiding principles of what this budget would look like. The first thing we really wanted to address was adjusting and enhancing the police department's structure and functions to stabilize the workforce and increase public safety while addressing evolving challenges. When we met to do the goal setting, two of the goals that we added this year were to engage in targeted initiatives to reduce drug crimes in high-risk areas and to consider staffing changes within existing or slightly increased funding for the enhancement of investigative detective staff and changes to focus on drug cases and cyber crimes. This budget took that to heart, and you'll see that when we get to some of the highlighted expenditures. Next, funding blight removal in a way that brings more expedient relief to neighborhoods. As everybody knows on the commission, the public may not know, we remove properties, blighted properties with federal funds, which requires a lot of paperwork. We've included some funding, some general fund funding that the city will be able to use to remove the worst of the properties more expediently and give relief to some of those neighbors. Appropriately sourcing operating versus capital expenditures. Without getting too far in the weeds tonight, the city had put a lot of our, what would typically be operating expenditures into the capital budget as constraints on the operating budget tightened over the years in a recession. To give you an example, there's an allocation in the capital budget of $15,000 or so to police and fire for miscellaneous items. Those are really operating budget dollars, but those dollars didn't exist in the operating budget over the last couple of years or maybe earlier in the decade. So we've moved a substantial amount of that money back out of the capital budget into the operating budget, which that does is free up the capital budget for projects. So you'll see that as we move forward, too. Addressing the adopted city commission goals along with police, we took a look throughout this and were mindful of this document as we formulated the budget for this year. Considering the implementation of commission-approved financial management policies, including the reserve policy and the policies that we passed last year. Employee health and welfare and retirement expenses are always a consideration because they do represent such a substantial amount of the budget, and they always go up at a rate higher than inflation. Revenue highlights. The initial assessed evaluation for the city increased 1.75%. Back in the glory days of the '90s, that would seem like a very bad year. Over the last 10 years, that's a good year. It's an encouraging sign. It shows a lot of investment in properties and investment in development that I think is going to continue, but it allowed us a little bit of flexibility. If you look at the next line, some of the revenue sources increased. That increase in assessed valuation brought about $300,000 in property tax revenue increase year-over-year. Sales and compensating use tax, about $450,000 year-over-year increase. Electric franchise fees, $200,000. A little bit of context of that, that doesn't mean necessarily that we're anticipating that much more electricity use. It's a budget number year-over-year. We are a little low in our budget number this year, last year, so when we budgeted this year, it increased about $200,000. Slight increase on the motor vehicle tax as well. As I talked about with the commission-approved financial management policies, the general fund in the proposed budget will include a budgeted reserve of $3.125 million, which is available to support unanticipated expenses or underperforming revenues. That is back to our pre-recession reserve levels. It also surpasses, not by a lot, but it surpasses our goal of 16%, our two months of operating reserves, and it puts the city in a very strong position as far as bond rating and our ability to function effectively from a financial perspective. The city also maintains about 1.75 in unbudgeted reserve. That's essentially the accumulation of the reserves in all the individual other funds. This is more just for your information. If you wonder, you hear a lot about, you know, where's the revenue for the city? Where's our operating revenue come from? Sales and use tax represent 45% of the city's operating revenue. Property taxes and franchise fees are about the same, 19% and 16%. Fines and forfeitures, other in charge for service, some of those include building permits, court fines. All those are all included in those much lesser categories. Expense highlights. This budget includes $234,000 in additional police department funding. This substantial investment addresses one new and three classified positions. That will be one new detective focusing on drug crimes, and then three reclassified positions, which are essentially upgraded to two more detectives, one for drug and one for cyber crimes, and then a promoted sergeant. The funding also includes an allotment for PD portion of the cloud storage funding, which is required because of the body cameras and other technological advancements in the police department that have increased the amount of memory and storage that's required, and funding for recruitment and retention efforts. There are stories, as everybody knows, across the country about the lack of available officers. We are doing better, as you'll hear tomorrow from the police chief. I think he's first on deck as far as city departments talk about that, but we really want to make sure that we're holding on to the officers that we worked so hard to get, who've made it through the academy, who've made it through field training, and who are now a part of the Leavenworth Police Department, keeping them here, making this an attractive place to work. So again, this is a substantial investment to target what we've heard and what the commission has heard are the major issues in this community, which are drugs and the emerging cyber crimes threat. The transfer of $98,000 in department operating subsidies from the capital improvements budget to the corresponding operating budgets. This doesn't reduce the amount that the police department gets for equipment or the fire department gets. It just moves it from the capital budget to their individual operating budget. The implementation of a cloud-based IT system largely designed for data created by the police department has increased annual costs by $72,000. That is just a reality of the world we live in now. City contributions to the police and fire state pension system, the Caper State Pension System, a contribution for all employees saw an increase of $235,000 in 2018. That is not uncommon, but it is a substantial expense. Health insurance costs are in the budget at 10%. The exact amount is unknown at this time, as is always the case. We don't know that number till early fall. If it comes in above 10%, we'll make some corresponding plan design changes, and we hope that it comes in below 10%. General fund blight elimination has been funded at $30,000. We included $30,000 in the line item, I believe, of the city planning department to do our own internal blight elimination. Employee compensation, although we did have a good year, we're recommending that the compensation plan remain the same as 2017, which is a 3% across the board, but not implement until mid-year. The long-term goal would be to reintroduce a merit-based element. However, this year, we felt that the priorities that were just listed in the expense highlights and the budget considerations took precedent. And additionally, I would like to note that the city will need to address information required to adequately perform a salary survey in the near future. The data that we have is five or six years old, so that's something we're going to have to do going forward. But it is not in this budget. Conclusion, mill rate recommendation. The 2018 recommended operating budget capitalizes on modest yet encouraging revenue growth from all major sources to reinvest in city services. The recommended city budget proposes to invest further in public safety while making small enhancements in public works, blight removal, and parks and recreation with a completely flat mill rate. Additionally, the city increased revenue in careful considerations of expenses over the previous years has allowed the city to reach pre-recession reserve levels. I've included our 2018 recommended budget, including the mill levy, which does remain flat.
Great.
Over the next two days, the departments will come in one by one, and LCDC and Main Street as well, the library as well, and we will go through their budgets line by line. If you have any questions tonight, I'd be happy to answer them before the meeting tomorrow, or then you'll have plenty of time during the meeting for questions on the budget.
Okay. Now, these meetings, will they be recorded or not?
They will be recorded.
Okay. And yeah, anyone is welcome to come.
Yes.
One question for clarification, Mr. Kramer, and probably the chief, too. The cyber crimes detective, just for clarification, that's not for the scam by the Nigerian prince type cyber crime? Am I correct in that assumption?
Right. We do get the occasional inquiry about that, but this is more for our local citizens, probably slightly towards our elderly population, who occasionally get the famous IRS scam, send us $500 because you have a tax worth, that sort of thing. Those cases can be local. We also have victims that do, live in our community that fall victim to internet crimes. There's other elements to it, like cyber bullying. The high school and younger folks have problems with that sort of thing, sexting and that sort of thing. And so it is primarily designed and enhanced to focus on our community, but there might be some participation at other levels.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good presentation. I get more complaints about code enforcement than anything else and blight removal, so I'm really looking forward to seeing how that plays out. Any other comments or questions before we move on?
No, it'll be an interesting two days.
Yes, it will. Thank you for the report. Okay. Next item, resolutions. Consider resolution B 2170, Community Development Block Grant Consolidation Plan and Annual Action Plan.
Mary Dwyer is here tonight to present this slide.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to present resolution B 2170 for the CWG Revised Consolidated Plan, which will now cover 2017 to 2021, and the Annual Action Plan, which is for 2017 and 2018.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions about the plans going forward?
Yes.
I do. And it's a request from basically a contractor. And just give him some information that if someone has an emergency repair request that, like say, to do a roof or heating and cooling system that's gone out, we provide up to $5,000 for assistance on that.
Depending on their income.
Yeah, on the need. What he requested me, and I had no kind of history on it, but he had told me that when a roof repair is in play there and they've done, he's noticed that if it's like a brand-new existing roof, which probably wouldn't fall under this, $5,000 covers it. But if they're looking at an older home, maybe with multiple layers of shingles and repair, that the $5,000 does not always cover that. And I was just concerned about, like, the history of requests that you've got, if this is designed not to cover the whole cost possibly and to just provide assistance there, or do you really see that maybe a roof repair or the requests that we're getting and the $5,000 is not routinely covering those emergency requests?
I'd say that the $5,000, it covers many of the requests, but not all of the requests.
Not all.
It depends on the size of the roof, the complexity of the roof.
That's what you said.
Roofing is the most complicated one, I'd say, for budgeting purposes, but also some of the accessibility kinds of issues with ramps and so forth. The $5,000 cap was designed primarily to keep the program small enough that we'd be able to serve enough residents with the dollars that we're getting. We took a 3% cut last year, we took a 2% cut this year. I look for us to take a big cut next year.
Right.
And so that doesn't always cover it, but sometimes it will cover enough of it that then the resident can cover the difference.
Okay.
Between those.
Okay.
But we needed to kind of contain the program. When it gets to be a larger program, it involves the lead-based paint rulings and a lot more complexity to the program. So this is a small repair program. It's not a major.
Okay. And it will, and also, too, we've had this $5,000, like, set for quite a number of years with, you know, and it is a shrinking fund, too. And I just, I said I'd ask some questions and address it. Maybe in the future, the committee could look some ways to adjust that if there is a history here that would substantiate maybe-
Well, and I think we have looked at it.
Flexibility.
And perhaps, you know, we could get input on how the city would like to do that, but the advisory board looked at two options. One was more money to fewer houses. The other one was less money to more houses.
Right.
And so they chose the latter.
Mm-huh.
And last year, we did 20 houses. The year before, we did 25. So, you know, we're trying to stretch it out as far as we could.
Yeah. Well, and then you've got the piece of the puzzle that I don't have. You know what you're working on and what the requests are on that, too.
Well, and there's a lot of need, no doubt about it. There's some houses that are challenged.
Okay.
Well, and we hope we continue to get our Community Development Block grant.
Yes, we do.
We lobby for that in Washington.
Maybe even more than anyone.
You know, you've got to fight every year for that, yeah. Okay. Thank you for your input on that.
Absolutely.
Just something for me to keep in the back of my mind to keep looking into.
You mentioned, you know, you've lost a couple percent over the last couple of years, and you expect potentially a larger percentage drop next year through your association or some of your contemporaries in this business. Are you hearing that it's going to be cut considerably?
Well, it first came out from the federal administration. Well, it first came out from the federal administration, the president, as a 50 percent cut, which is huge.
Yeah.
And so then it dropped down to somewhere between 20 and 40. But either of those would be way more than we usually have. And what that does for a small city is it really constricts what we can spend on, like, public service agencies, and because they're all, and blight elimination, all those are a formula based on how much you're spending on low, moderate income. So you have to spend no more than 15 percent on public service agencies, you can't spend more than 30 percent on blight elimination of what you totally spend that year. So it really starts to scale things back quite a bit. So I'm hoping, optimistically, that perhaps, we don't have any cut, but I think that's optimistic.
Using a 40 percent scenario, this roofing program would go from 5 to 3. Is that correct? If you want it to help the same numbers, but not the same dollar value.
Yeah, we can change how much we contribute to a program, we can cut back, you know, at some point, you cut it back so much that you, I have a hard time getting contractors to bid the small jobs the way it is.
Right.
So if you cut it back too much more.
Is the purpose of the roofing program to provide new roofing completely, or to give assistance to the property owner, or to both?
It's actually a home repair program, and so within that, it's kind of health and safety oriented. So it's HVAC, it's electrical, plumbing, roofing, accessibility.
Emergency-type issues, or?
Emergency issues, or if they're there to the point where they're going to have problems, yeah.
Okay.
And it's based on income.
Understand.
And the building inspectors and myself go and look at the house and kind of talk to the owner and make some priorities about what we think that is in the city's best interest to fix.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution B-2170, CDBG Consolidate Plan and Annual Action Plan as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second, please begin voting with Commissioner Rini.
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dwyer. Next item on the agenda, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider Leavenworth Soccer Association contract renewal.
Steve Graham will handle this item.
Thank you, Paul. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this is the agreement between the city and Leavenworth Soccer Association to administer the soccer program for the city of Leavenworth. You'll recall at the June 6 study session, we reviewed, we reviewed the operating agreement that is due up at the end of July, July 31st. Now, we had a really good discussion that night, and the commission's consensus was to continue on with the city's partnership with LSA. So based on discussion that night and discussions with LSA, I've worked on updating the new contract, which will become effective August 1st, pending your approval this evening. That is attached in your packet, some of the changes based on discussions. One change made to the minimum required amount of participating for the participants, minimum playing time for the participants. We've changed that to just be in the recreational area as a requirement. Also, for LSA to provide program and financial summary to the city of Leavenworth on an annual basis, set up after the fall season at the end of the year.
Good.
And the third, and big change, is every year, LSA pays a nominal fee to the city for use of the complex. That fee has been going up at a rate of about $500 per year, as our maintenance costs continue to increase, and a little bit of catch-up from back in the day where those amounts were very low. For 2017, this year, that amount is $7,500.
Increased $7,500?
No, it's, that's the fee.
Right.
Yes, yes. So, we did receive a written request from LSA to cap that fee at $7,500 for each year in this upcoming three-year agreement. We fully appreciate how their operating costs continue to increase to operate the program. However, obviously, our maintenance costs continue to increase as well. Over the years, we've had a great working relationship with LSA and all of the programs and all of the tournaments and stuff they've brought in. So what staff has recommended into the city commission tonight is that we meet them halfway over the course of this next three-year agreement, and it raises at a rate of $250 per year. So for 2018, next year would be $7,750, and $8,000 for 2019, and $8250 for 2020. And then at that time, you know, we can reassess where we're at, where they're at, and go from there.
Okay. Do you think that'll cover our costs?
Well, it won't, it doesn't fully cover, it's, I mean, I think we put a lot more into it than when you talk about personnel and all the equipment we use. However, you know, we're providing a valuable service, you know, and with LSA's help, you know, to the youth of Leavenworth, and it's very valuable. And I know, you know, like I said before, we've had a great working relationship with LSA. I know last year, they brought their, the prison break tournament back in. It wasn't at the numbers that it was in the past, but I think they're hoping to get back up there. Back in the day, they brought in well over 100 teams into our community from outside, which is fantastic.
That's awesome, yeah.
I believe they were in the 50s last year. Charity Briggs is the president of LSA, she's here tonight if you have any questions for her. But with that, I would, I'll open it up for any discussion, any questions you may have.
Well, soccer is just growing and growing.
It's not going anywhere, it's very popular, yes.
Yeah, I think it's good, a good soccer program. We appreciate the work that the soccer association does for this. Any other comments on this, or?
No, actually, no, I thought it was pretty good and very reasonable. I'm glad you're reducing the increase, when I first read it, 500 a year, hadn't looked at it in a long time, but that was pretty steep, so I'm glad you guys worked out a compromised situation on that. And then, and I know the minimum playing time, that's always a tricky one to deal with, and I think you did a really good job here, you know, outlining that here, too.
All right, any other comments or questions on this regard? Ms. Briggs, did you want to speak?
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay, I'll give you the opportunity. All right, I guess that's, that's it.
Yes, so we just recommend approval of the agreement with LSA.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I recommend that we move for approval, the Leavenworth Soccer Association contract renewal as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Rini.
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Okay. Commissioners, I'd like to move for your approval, claims for June 24, 2017 through July 7, 2017, in the amount of $971,085.90, net amount for pay number 14, effective July 7, 2017, in the amount of $333,262.94. No fire and police pension during this period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Rini.
Aye.
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 Motion carried. Any other items, Mr. Kramer, or Commissioners?
Only thing I would like to say is that last Friday, the unity in the community and Jermaine Wilson did a fabulous job of putting that together with the police department, and it looked like everybody was having a great time playing basketball and playing baseball, and it just looked like it was, I saw you out there playing baseball. And it looked like, you know, it was just wonderful to see all the kids together and doing stuff, and I had a lot of kids there.
There were.
And painted faces, and it wore me out.
And you need to compliment yourself on your face painting. She had the longest line there. And my only regret is it was so hot, I didn't bring my camera out to take some pictures of your work out there. That was, those were cool.
Thank you very much. Well, it was a really great event, and I'm so glad that he's doing it, and it's good that our community is doing something like this. Thank you, Chief.
Any other comments? Okay, everybody be safe out there. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, please begin voting with Commissioner Rini.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, we are adjourned.